Quickly after at the end. We'll get started here in just a minute. Just waiting on a few last technical details. Okay, okay, here we go. So, welcome, everybody, to the Oakdale City Council Regular Meeting, October 25th, 2022. Katie, will you do roll call, please? Oh, Sarah, good evening.
Councilmember Ingritson?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg?
Here.
Councilmember Zabel?
Here.
And Mayor Renkey?
Here. Please join me now in the Pledge of Legions. The amendment dealt with items on the claims that very towards the end of the meeting. But upon review, do you want to make any changes or could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the agenda is approved as amended. First up on the docket is the approval of minutes for two meetings. One was the Oakdale City Council Workshop, October 11. The other is the Oakdale Regular Meeting, October 11. So, taking the workshop first, upon review, were there any changes or adjustments you need to make? Could I have a motion, please?
No move.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'll abstain because I was absent.
Very good, one abstention. The second set of meeting minutes is the regular meeting from October 12 or 11. Upon review, councilors, any changes or adjustments you want to make? Have a motion then, please.
No move.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved as presented with an abstention from Councilmember Zabel. We have a couple of public hearings right off the bat. The first one is dealing with the certification of the delinquent utilities, nuisance charges, and inactive accounts to Washington County for inclusion on the 2023 property taxes. Jason, do you want to give us a short overview or really the viewing public?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this hearing this evening is allowed for public commentary regarding the delinquent utilities, nuisance charges, and inactive accounts that are proposed for certification to Washington County for collection with the 2023 property taxes. The list from a month ago has been reduced from about 364 delinquent utility accounts to 200. The balance is reduced approximately in half as well. Again, essentially, the public hearing is to allow for the public to provide any commentary regarding this proposed certification. And then also, the list may be reduced, it won't expand pending any payments that occur between the certification date and when it's actually formally certified to Washington County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilors, anything for Jason? So, since this is a public hearing, the process that we're going to use is I'm going to shortly open up to the public anybody that wants to speak on this topic. We welcome them to come to the podium, state your name and address, and then share your information. We typically ask people just to keep it to about three minutes. And if the person just before you said the same thing, it's very, very fine to say that you agree with the person before. So, I'll open the public hearing now and invite anybody that wants to speak on this topic to approach the podium. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back up front. Councilors, do you have any comments or discussions? I'll now entertain a motion.
I'd like to waive reading and adopt Resolution Number 2022-111, certifying delinquent utilities, nuisance charges, and inactive accounts to Washington County for inclusion on 2023 property taxes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes as presented, thank you. Second hearing is kind of an exciting one, dealing with the Roers Project up at the Willbrook really the seventh edition. It includes five items. And during the public hearing, we're going to take comment on all of them, but then as a body will take each one individually and ask for a motion for approval or adjustment or however council wants to see it work. So, with that, I think Luke, are you going to lead us through this?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Luke.
Let's see if I can get the image on the screen here. It's not necessary, but it would be nice to have an image to be able to see the site. So, yes, this request is for the next phase of Willbrook. It's Willbrook Seventh Edition. The location of this specific property is the southeast quadrant of I-694 and 40th Street. It's the overall site is approximately 19 and a half acres, and the proposal is to develop a 190-unit apartment building along with 79 townhome rental units.
Please be, Luke?
Yes.
Okay, now we got it on there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how. Oh. Great, thank you. So, these are all market rate rental units. Amenities for the site would include a clubhouse, a pool, and sidewalks as well. And the requests include a PUD amendment for various deviations from the Willbrook PUD, a noise variance due to the site being so close to the interstate, preliminary and final plat, and two site plans. I'll go into a little bit more detail in a moment about that. For the comp plan, this, the comp plan guides this site for mixed-use residential. Deviations from the Willbrook PUD include lower density, approximately 18 dwelling units per acre, whereas the PUD calls for 35 to 55 dwelling units per acre. Another deviation is utilizing more Class III materials for the townhomes, reducing the landscaping for the overall site, and also a deviation from the site lighting requirements for a small portion of the lot containing the apartment building that that's right along the interstate. Staff is comfortable with the deviations for the reasons that are detailed in the staff report. Just a little bit more about the noise variance. The data that the applicant provided revealed that the noise levels from this property exceed the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's levels. However, there are no practical mitigation measures available here, especially with the four-story apartment building, landscaping, earth and berms, which is the only allowed mitigation measure would not do much in that case. So, staff is comfortable with the requested variance. For the two site plans, they're essentially the same with one difference, and that is that in one option, excuse me, the first option for the site plan would include planting of trees and landscaping in the right of way of 694 through the Minnesota DOT's Highway Sponsorship Program, which is actually reviewed and approved by the Federal Highway Agency. And then the second site plan option, if the applicant couldn't receive approval through the Highway Sponsorship Program, that's their backup plan to be able to proceed with their development with a reduced number of trees, but the trees and the landscaping would be fully within their property boundaries. So, the Planning Commission, they reviewed this request at their October 6 meeting, and they recommended approval. Staff recommends approval of the request subject to the conditions and provisions that are listed in the ordinance and resolutions, which I will summarize. So, for the plat resolution, it includes the execution of a site improvement performance agreement, various permits and approvals must be obtained, satisfaction and park dedication requirements, various plat updates, establishment of easements, conveyance of the outlots to the city, so that the outlots being the new park that will be just south of the site as well as a stormwater pond and a remnant lot there containing wetland. The developer rough grade the future park, the developer construct the entire roadway, including the park access at their own expense unless an alternative agreement is entered into between the developer and the city. And then finally, for this one, assessments for the 40th Street project only apply to lots one and two for this subdivision. Moving on to the site plan, conditions of approval. The only difference between the two site plans is the first option for the first site plan presented in the packet, and that is to obtain approval through the Federal Highway Administration for the Highway Sponsorship Program. And then, moving on, the applicant obtained various approvals and permits for the site, minor updates to the site, including screening. The developer followed the Willbrook landscaping plan for landscaping, and the applicant obtained DOT approval for the site lighting because there is an area, as mentioned, that slightly goes above our threshold for site lighting requirements. And one more condition here is to establish necessary easements for the development. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Luke. Councilors, anything for Luke? Very good. I see the applicant is here, and I think I'll open it up to the public hearing, invite the applicant to make comment first, if you'd like, and then allow other people to also comment. So, I will now open the hearing to the public. And if anybody from the Roers team would like to comment, that'd be great. It's a terrific project, by the way.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having us. My name is Shane LaFave. I'm a Senior Vice President of Development for Roers. Just so that we know who's in attendance here, we've got our architect and civil engineer here with us tonight, so if there are questions related to those, we can try to answer them. But overall, from the developer's perspective, had a really good experience working with the staff and planning department to make this a reality. Hopefully, this is something that you guys are excited about because we certainly are and love to kind of get through the final process here and start building this thing, make it a reality. So, happy to answer any questions from Council, from the mayor, or from the public. So, we're here.
Councilors, anything for, was it Jason?
Shane.
Shane, Shane, excuse me.
Yep.
Maybe outline the schedule, if you would. Assume, when would you start?
Yeah, so assuming things go well here and we get our permit, the idea would be to start. I know it's winter's coming, the snow is going to be flying, but we want to get going here within the next month or two. So, get going, and then that allows us to open the buildings in warmer weather in 2024.
So, maybe 13, 14-month duration, something like that?
Yeah, it'll be a little more than that, especially on the apartment building. Some of the townhome buildings will be able to be more of a phased opening and can come on sooner than that, so.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Yep.
Go ahead and grab a seat, and if you're willing to be available for any, anybody that has a comment, I appreciate it. So, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this as part of the public hearing, it's the same tradition, you know, about three minutes, come up to the podium, state your name and address. Is anybody here that would like to comment on this, on this project? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Council, any comments, questions, discussion points?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Mr. Zabel?
It was a idea or proposal that I posed to the city administrator earlier today, and maybe this is just a question for the council, how we want to handle this, talking about the landscaping plan, option two. And my understanding is city staff talked with the developer, and they have no objections to increasing the number of proposed trees in option two, and I believe staff has some proposed language if we do want to accommodate that. My question for my colleagues is how do we want to do this? We can take the motions as they're written, and I can offer it as an amendment after that, or we can make the change now and push this through as amended? I'm fine with either.
Let's do the latter, if you're okay.
Yep.
And so, we get to that point, you can make that amendment.
Sure. Do you want me to just talk about what the specifics are?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, as we had included in our packet, there were two landscape plans. Option two really only comes into effect if the federal, I think, Highway Administration declines option one. And the proposed there was to reduce the number of trees required in this landscaping area. My request of the developer was to keep the total number of trees required, but just find somewhere else to plant them or provide a cash option to the city, and we can handle planting. In talking with the Community Development Director, it sounds like Outlet B, the park, would be a natural place for those additional trees, and it sounds like the developer is agreeable to that. So, my request would be to, I guess, well, I will look towards Luke on how to achieve this.
Yes, so if this is the direction that council wants to go, we have drafted some language here for an additional condition. I can go ahead and read that. The developer shall install the remaining 29 trees equivalent to the standards set forth in Section 25-175H of the city ordinance, or provide an equivalent cash contribution for landscaping on Outlet B of Willbrook Seventh Edition.
Okay, councilors, any questions on Mr. Zabel's description? As an applicant, Shane, are you just confirming for the public record?
Yep. No, that's no problem, we're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. So, let's take her one at a time.
Okay.
So, let's take the one dealing with the amendment to the planned unit development. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution Number 888, approving an amendment to the Willbrook Plan Unit Development as amended, technically, or with the additional condition as outlined by staff.
Very good.
Chris is nodding, so I'm going to go with that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, there's a motion, can I have a second, please?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes as presented, and... Did we close the public hearing? Amended, I'm sorry. Did we close the public hearing? Well, probably not. Good thing to do.
Glad I asked.
That's a good question. Not officially, probably.
No, for each item on each end. Oh, no, one public hearing, sorry. So, can I go back and close the public hearing? Do I have to redo the motion again?
No.
Or it's okay? Let me just close the public hearing and bring it back up front, if I didn't do it already. And I'm sure I did, when I think about it, I'm sure I did. Okay, so, that first, that first motion passes as presented. There's a second one there dealing with the variance for the highway noise levels. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2022-112, approving a variance for highway noise levels at the Willbrook Seventh Edition.
So, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes as presented, thank you. We have a second motion dealing with the preliminary and final plat. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2022-113, approving the preliminary and final plat of Willbrook Seventh Edition, subject to conditions.
So, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes as presented, thank you. We also have one dealing with the site plan, option one. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2022-114, approving the site plan, option one, for Roers at Willbrook, with conditions included in the attached resolution.
So, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes as presented, thank you. We have the final one dealing with the site plan, option two. Could I have a motion there, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading, adopt Resolution 2022-115, approving the site plan, option two, for Roers at Willbrook, with conditions included in the attached resolution.
So, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes as presented, thank you. Thank you very much. It's a beautiful project, really some gorgeous buildings. The clubhouse is going to be spectacular, and I think the option for the townhomes with the tuck-under is a really cool one, too. So, welcome and thank you. Next on the agenda is a time we call the Open Forum. Open Forum is a time that anybody has, that would like to say anything about ongoings or going-ons in the city.
Yeah, I think so.
They're welcome to do so. So, again, we'd like people to come up to the podium, share your name and address, and then share what's on your mind with us. So, come on up, yep. Good evening. So, good evening, nice to see you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Jerry Parento. I live at 617 Century Avenue North. That's on the Maplewood side of the street, which I hope you won't hold against me. But anyway, my purpose here tonight is to share some, a letter that was put together by the members of the farmer's market. I've given a copy to Julie Williams, the recreation superintendent. It has to do with Nate Timmons, who runs the market. So, if I may just read it. "We, the undersigned vendors at the Oakdale Farmer's Market, wish to acknowledge the market manager, Nate Timmons, for the manner in which he runs the market. Now and then, for whatever reason, a regular vendor may not be able to attend on a given day. Nate quickly adjusts the vendor lineup to keep the others together and compatible. About the middle of August, we experienced a near monsoon rain, rainfall during that market. While Nate himself was soaked to the skin, he screwed about and assisted all vendors attempting to cover or otherwise protect their products. On Wednesday, August 31st, the temperature was in the low 90s with a high humidity, and one of the vendors was overcome with heat. He had to seek medical attention and was assisted to City Hall, where he was treated by several staff, two Oakdale EMTs, and taken home by one of the Oakdale Police Officers. This left the vendor's adult daughter alone at their booth. Again, Nate stepped in and saw to it that she had all the help she needed, and his sister heard packing up when the market was over. Nate continues to show genuine concern for all the vendors, as well as the market shoppers, to ensure that as good time is had by all. Nate most certainly deserves, or has earned and deserved a note of recognition, sincerely by the vendors of the market." I believe you have copies of the letter now? See, there's about 16, 15 or 16 signatures on that letter. These are just a couple of the examples that Nate has shown to be so involved in making sure that the market runs well. And I close a comment, this letter was put together near the end of the season, and several of vendors were no longer there, their products are over, and otherwise, there might be five or six more signatures to the 15 already there. Further, I'm confident that if the indoor, if the indoor market vendors would also, I'm confident that the indoor market vendor would also agree, and there would be another 15 to 20 vendor signatures on this letter. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge your staff member, Teresa Almquist, for typing this letter for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brent. We do have a copy of the letter.
I'm sorry.
We do have a copy of the letter.
Yep.
So, that'll get entered into the official record. And, you know, it's really pretty special that you're here and also reading the letter and acknowledging Nate's service and his style of doing it. We know Nate in different ways, but it's fun for us to see some of the specifics that just exemplify.
Well, I could go on, I could go on for a whole hour about things he does, all several little things and big things, all like it, just makes it a good market.
We're super fortunate to have him on our side of the table. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak at Open Forum? Seeing that, I'm going to close and then move on to the next item, which is the consensus motions. In front of us tonight, we have A through J. The councilors, upon review, did you want to remove any of these or pull any of them?
I think we have A through L, right?
Oops. Yes, 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 I'm sorry. L. We have consensus motions A through L. Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A through L as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the consensus motions are approved as presented, thank you. We're going to move on to the Advisory Boards and Commissions. And the first one is the Economic Development Commission. There was no meeting, but our council liaison for that commission is Susie Olson. What I do want to do is to acknowledge a resignation from that group. And I want to accept, or request that the city council accept the resignation of Holly Kemp from the ED Economic Development Commission, effective October 25, 2022. Holly, I'm going to invite you up to the podium in just a moment, but I'm going to read this first and then share it with you, and maybe we can do a picture also. So, this is in a certificate of appreciation for Holly Kemp, and it says, "In recognition of her outstanding service to the city of Oakdale as a member of its Economic Development Commission, and so we thank you," and assigned by myself, myself and the councilmembers, Ingritson, Olson, Swedberg, and Zabel. So, I want you to meet me down at the podium. Councilors, let's do a picture, too. If you don't mind.
Are we coming at all?
Everybody loves Holly.
Yeah, yeah. Count of three. One, two, three. Couple more. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you, Holly.
Won't let her leave.
Well, you have a good evening. And that's, you're so grateful for all of your friends. That's cool. Huh? I'm, I'm actually. Yes, you assume I can. Yep. If you said what you'd like to have over here, you're good.
Yeah. Yes. Thanks, Holly.
Good night, Mr. Parento. Thank you. And thank you, too, Holly. Thanks for coming up tonight. Next up is something also pretty.
Do we have to make the motion?
I think we just accept the resignation. If I remember right. On our procedural.
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Councilmember Swedberg would like to adjust the wording on this, so go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah. Instead of say accept, we just acknowledge because there's no accept or reject here. It's, it's just a matter of acknowledge. And that is, matches with what our policy says.
Yes. So the acknowledgement of Holly Kemp's resignation.
Yep. Thank you.
Very good. Second is the topic of the student representative to be appointed to the Economic Development Commission. Now, this is something that we kicked around for a little while and it's a pretty amazing, pretty good thing. And the person is pretty amazing, too. So can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Lucia Shetka to serve on the Economic Development Commission as a non-voting ex-officio student representative member, term to begin October 25th, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2024.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Then that motion passes. And we welcome Lucia, Lucia? Pronunciation? Shetka to the EDC. For the, for the people who may be watching, this, this student is over at Tartan High School, which is a part of ISD 622. And we really need to have her involved.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more point?
Yes.
So our city ordinances and rules say we can have student representatives on all of our commissions. So if there are any students who are interested in our parks or the environment, or oddly enough, planning and zoning, we encourage them to come out. I mean, it's a cool opportunity to get involved, learn a little bit about what goes on in government and, and, you know, for a relatively small time commitment. So we'll continue working with staff at Tartan, you know, if they help identify any students who might fit some of the roles and get, get students plugged in.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, a point of order. I think you need a motion on the acknowledging the resignation. Did you do that? Did I miss it?
I thought we just acknowledged it. I don't know.
Oh, I think you need a motion per the policy.
It does say that.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to request that city council acknowledges the resignation of Holly Kemp from the EDC, effective October 25th, 2022.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Then that motion passes as presented. Thank you. Going on on that portion of the agenda, which is dealing with the advisory boards and commissions, the next topic was the Environmental Management Commission. All of the council members and myself are liaisons to certain commissions. In this case, for that, that commission, it's Councilmember Zabel. There was a meeting on the 17th.
They had a meeting. I could not attend, so no update tonight.
Fair enough. Thank you. The other commissions, the planning commission, the council liaison is Councilor Swedberg. There was no meeting. The Parks and Recreation Commission, there was a meeting that was canceled. That council liaison is Councilor Inger Britson. And then the tree board, there was no meeting. I'm the liaison to that organization. We're going to move on then to the award of bid. And... I moved too fast here. Here we go. Jason?
No, there is none, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Are there any? There's none on the agenda.
Thank you. Then the staff reports. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I have the council nothing specific to report tonight, but happy to answer questions.
Counselors, say anything for Jim.
No.
No.
Thank you, Jim. Administrators, report.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I do have a short presentation I'd like to do for the public, well, or for any of you if you have questions, but I'm doubting that. So it is on the local option sales tax. If you'll give me a second to do this. Thank you, Laurie, for doing the PowerPoint. So for the members of the public and anybody interested, the city of Oakdale has a local option sales tax on the ballot for the 2022 election. This presentation is meant to provide information on the sales tax proposed facility projects and answer any frequently asked questions. Regarding background, since Oakdale became a city in 1974, we have experienced significant growth, and that is expected to continue. While city police and public works services have evolved during that time to meet the changing needs, their facilities have not. The city needs to address the space constraints that have created significant operational challenges for these departments. The city council considered several means to address these facility challenges and how to pay for the new and remodeled building, buildings. They considered property taxes, which would put the full burden on the residents of Oakdale. But a local option sales tax was another option, and that ultimately was deemed as the fairest way to fund these projects by the city council. Because it does impact not only Oakdale residents, it also impacts Oakdale non-residents who utilizes, who utilize, excuse me, the services of the Oakdale Police and Public Works Departments. The city council unanimously voted to put the sales tax on the November 8th ballot. This, in a U of M extension study was done over the past year, and this, this study found that 50% of all sales in the city of Oakdale comes from non-residents. This information was very valuable to the city council in determining that a local option sales tax could help the city with the funding to equitably address our facility challenges. So what is a local option sales tax? It is a tax that is collected within the boundaries of a city or a county. A local option sales tax applies to the same items and services that a general sale tax applies to. What can it be used for? It can be used by local governments in Minnesota to fund capital projects such as buildings, public buildings, libraries, parks, and other amenities. A project must have the regional significance outlier and definition as defined, defined by the state of Minnesota and the state legislature, which means it must be something that benefits more than just the residents of the city. In this case, a local option sales tax can be used to fund both the expanded police facility and a new public works facility, because these services impact Oakdale residents and non-residents alike. So cities cannot just create a sales tax. There is a very detailed process outlined and guided by state law. First, a city must propose the legislation for the defined projects and receive approval from the state legislature for the proposed projects. It then comes back to the local governing body, mayor and city council, for approval. The final step is to review, or, excuse me, receive approval from the voters via a ballot referendum. Oakdale is in this final stage of the process. If the voters support the sales tax, it would be enacted on April 1st, 2023. Oakdale's proposed sales tax would be one-half of 1% or 50 cents for every $100 spent. Residents and non-residents would share the cost for this sales tax for no longer than 25 years. The tax rate would go from three, or 7.375 currently to 7.875%. A little bit about the proposed projects. The police facility calls for an expansion and remodel of the existing building, the one that currently attached to City Hall, for about $15 million in sales tax. And the new public works facility is for, will allocate $22 million of the sales tax. The current police facility has a lot of challenges. They have occupied the facility, the current facility, since 1992. In that time, staff has increased 70% in complaints. Police activities, reports have risen 65%. The current facility is not equipped to deal with the modern societal and caseload challenges and changes that were just not envisioned when the building was constructed in 1992. Space constraints require equipment to be stored throughout the facility, which creates wasted time on each shift, having to move to where the items are located. Some records and evidence also have to be stored off-site, which creates additional challenges and security concerns for the city and for staff. Workstations in the police department are not adequate. There are 24 staff members. We do not have that many workstations. Further, the facility lacks indoor parking for vehicles and, because squad cars are on and they run year-round in order to protect the equipment inside, which cuts the useful life of the vehicles. And it, and the need for, excuse me, the need for consistent repairs and earlier replacement is a constant challenge. Locker rooms are equipped, where the equipment is stored, are very, very full. There is no additional space for lockers, and the current lockers are now shared among the staff. Next, you're going to see some police facility renderings that we had drawn up as we are doing this planning. And it calls for a remodel and expansion of the current facility next to City Hall, attached to City Hall. Plans intend to address the operator, operational challenges mentioned and the current space constraints. And then Laurie will page through these renderings. So on to the public works facility challenges. They have been occupied, it's been occupied in this current facility for 37 years. Over that time, the city has added 27 miles of roads, eight additional parks, and increased staff by, staffing by 65% to handle the growing workload. The current facility is surrounded by wetlands on three sides, and it has absolutely no room for expansion. The heating and ventilation systems have reached their maximum life, which has created air quality concerns in the building. City equipment is stored outside year-round due to insufficient inside storage, which also, also shortens the useful life of the equipment, much like the police department. Another challenge of the current facility is a lack of ADA compliant and equitable locker rooms for male and female, male employees. Also, a lack of storage means vehicle parts are stored on the second floor. The mechanics have to go up there, carry the heavy parts down, up and down the steps, and that creates significant safety concerns. The proposed plans call for a new public works facility at 32nd and Granada Avenue North. Plans intend to address these challenges and the growing needs for the public works department. And we have some renderings. Laurie will page through these renderings. So in regards to the voting ballot on November 8th, at the November 8th election, they'll see, Oakdale residents will see two questions on the ballot, one for public works and one for police. It is very important to note that the total sales tax, whether only one or both projects are approved, will not exceed one-half of 1%. And it will be, it will not be 1% if both projects are approved. It is one-half of 1% total. More information is available on our website. It's all over our website. It's all over social media. It's everywhere. And the council members are always willing and available to answer any questions or concerns that the public may have. So I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Chris. Counselors, any questions for Chris on the local area sales tax or anything else in her realm?
I think as a council, we've covered it pretty well. For years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Council presentations. Mr. Zabel, do you want to start?
I don't think I have anything.
Councilmember Swedberg.
None for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Olson.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Councilmember Inger Britson.
Nothing.
The one that I wanted to talk about is to extend an invitation to anybody that's watching to, to walk with me. This is on the Saturday, the 29th of October. Please come and meet us at 9 o'clock at the Oakdale Police Department. The purpose of this is to actually walk and talk and, and look at the facility, to hear, hear firsthand from Chief Newton and to, to see the, the problems that are, that we've experienced here now for many years, and to see the opportunity that we have in front of us to, to make a change for the better. So there's really no prior registration required. Just please come up and meet us at 9 o'clock at the police, police department here at City Hall. I've got nothing else as far as the presentation. So let's move on to the, the claims. So in front of us tonight, we have the claims for the period, October 12th, 2022 through October 25th, 2022. That's in the amount of $2,082,803.92. Counselors, did you see any thing that you wanted to question or get more explanation on?
I have a question. The total amount changed. Can staff provide some explanation on what was added? I didn't see anything, I didn't see any individual items flagged in there, so.
Yes. Thank you for asking, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So the, the audit process that goes through when we process the claims, only part of it got picked up. So the ones that were sitting in the draft didn't get picked up and they need to be paid on time. So what we intended to do was send you a summary, but we posted the agenda very quickly and a little accidentally. So we weren't able to get that summary with the highlights. So we can send that to you. Jason, can, I don't recall what the, I didn't see the details. Do you recall what some of the details were? Can you just highlight it for the council?
Good evening.
Mayors.
Jason Zimmerman, Finance Director. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Essentially, what, what occurred is through the payroll processing, there's direct deposits, there are some checks that are written for some vendors, and then there's, are some electronic payments that are made for, for taxes, pension, things like that. Through the processing, the, the draft payments or electronic payments that are made were not captured as part of the, the claim summary initially. Through the revision process this morning, I identified that there is a failure to include all of those, those expenses. So that was the effort this morning to, to update the packet to include all of the payroll related expenses.
So you go ahead and just send that to us.
Of course.
In the near, in the near future. So the amount, the differential that Councilmember Zabel is identifying is just a little bit under $200,000, I think. Big round numbers. So. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any additional questions? So in front of us, send the $2,082,000. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion passes as presented. Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.